This conference will now be recorded.
Seeing none, we'll move on to comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. Okay, do you want to?
No, she should.
Yeah, you should use a mic. I'll give you a mic. So Roseanne Greco would like to make a few comments. Is there anyone on GoToMeeting who wants to make a comment? I don't see anyone turning their lamp on. Okay, go ahead, please.
My name is Roseanne Greco. I'm a resident of South Burlington. I want to make a comment. It's only about two minutes long. For the past four months, every city council meeting except for last night, you have heard people urging you to use the power you have to take actions in South Burlington to address the climate crisis. We, the people, have been using our voices during the public comment period in actions similar to the action of the 16-year-old Swedish girl, Greta Thunberg. Greta sat on the steps of her apartment building trying to get her government to take meaningful actions to stop contributing to climate destruction, to stop talking about climate change and start doing something, to stop business as usual and to treat the crisis as an emergency. The people who you have heard from are the Greta Thunbergs of South Burlington. They were of different genders and from different age groups: high school students, college students, young parents, middle-aged, and senior citizens. I'm here this evening to tell you that there is one voice who you will not get to hear. At 88 years old, Roddy O'Neil-Thury wanted to be one of the Greta's of South Burlington. She had planned to see, but Roddy died a few weeks ago. The thing is, you knew Roddy. You knew she was an incredible person. She's a woman of deep faith, strong moral convictions, compassionate and understanding, and kind to everyone. She subscribed to Gandhi's claim that religion and politics are inextricable. Roddy was a dear friend of mine, and we talked often about the climate crisis. I know she viewed it as a social monopoly, and deeply acted on it as a moral imperative. I don't know what Roddy had planned to say to you, but I just thought it important for you to know that she wanted to add her voice to the others.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Well, seeing none, then let's start the business of the evening with our panel discussion on land use and equity. We're hoping that the information and perspectives shared will inform future decision-making, but no action is anticipated at this meeting. This is truly just information gathering. We have a pretty incredible panel tonight, starting with Dr. Pablo Boz, or is it Boz? Boz is on the GoToMeeting. So, Dr. Boz, maybe you can show us your face. And he's from the University of Vermont. He's an urban geographer, a political ecologist, and migration studies scholar. Welcome, Pablo. He works on refugee resettlement and agriculture and food security, including through the USDA's Community Food Program. He's a past member of the Green Mountain Transit and Burlington Housing Authority and current member of the Burlington Public Works and the Burlington Reparations Task Force. And I suspect there's lots of other things that you do as well. But welcome and thank you very much for giving us some of your time. The second panelist is also on GoToMeeting, Dr. Leslie Anne Dupinijerol, of the University of Vermont. Welcome. A scholar specialized in hydrology, remote sensing, climate change and variability, extreme weather and climate literacy. She's the co-founder of the Diversity Climate Network, D-ClimNet, and the Vermont State Climatologist. Am I pronouncing that right? Climatologist, yeah. President of the American Association of State Climatologists Incorporated and a member of the Vermont Climate Council and likely as well many other things. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Then we have Elizabeth Macken. I think you like to be referred to as Liz. She's a UVM class of 2021. She has a BS in Environmental Studies, a BA in Political Science. She's Assistant Farmer Market Manager of the Last Resort Farm in Moncton, Vermont. And then we have Chief Richard Dick-Mannard of the St. Francis Sokoke Band of the Masispoi Abnaki Nation. He's an accomplished woodcarver and leader working to decrease gaps in service and treatment across the spectrums of health, human, and social services for the Abnaki people. Thank you very much, Chief. And we have another chief, Chief John Stevens of the Nalvegan Band of the Kusak Abnaki Nation. He's an award-winning businessman, a writer and lecturer. He's the past Chair of the Vermont Commission on Native American Affairs, who led the effort to obtain legal recognition for the Abnaki people in Vermont. So I really thank you all for joining us tonight. Each speaker will provide about 10 minutes of commentary or presentation. I think Leslie has some slides. And then there'll be a facilitated question and answer period led by Counselor Emory. So do you have a particular order that you thought about?
We could just proceed in alphabetical order.
Okay, so we'll start with Dr. Boz.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you again for the invitation. Coming to you from the West Coast of Canada, from Vancouver, on the unceded territory of the Musqueam First Nation. And as I said, I thank you for the invitation to come and speak with you. I'll just make a few comments drawing on the experience that I've had as a urban geographer, working on this kind of fundamental question of what makes for a livable community. And I've worked in cities of many sizes here in Vancouver where I grew up. I've been really interested in a transit-friendly city. How do you make a city more likable at a very interesting scale as it has kind of exploded in growth? I've worked extensively in my other hometown of Calcutta, a city of 13.5 million in India, and specifically on an environmental improvement program there. So I've been really interested in this sort of question at different kinds of scales. And since I've been in Burlington now for 13 years, I've been really interested in the greater Burlington area and kind of what growth and settlement in a place like that looks like. And I've been particularly interested, as somebody who had worked before I moved to Vermont, on the place that immigrants play in cities. And, you know, I moved from places like Toronto and Vancouver, and I moved to Burlington and, you know, a very different kind of context, a very different kind of demographic. And I found the Refugee Resettlement Program. And for the last 10 years or so, I've been looking at this kind of question of where do refugees resettle in the US? I've been looking all across the US, as well as in Germany, Canada, and France, and looking outside of the major metropolitan areas and kind of looking at that question of like, well, what makes for a good place? Why do people go to certain places and not go to others? And I know that this is a question that is being taken up in all sorts of ways in all sorts of communities across Vermont as well as the demographic is ever so slightly shifting. And yet it's shifting in certain places rather than others. So I know that there's quite a few people on the panel. So I'm really going to just make a few very quick observations about something I've seen, some of the things that I've seen across very different scales, very different contexts of cities, of nations, and of communities. And there's three things that I'm particularly interested in or concerned with when I think about these questions of growth and of equity. The other, sorry, the other really quick context that I want to mention, I think it was said in the introduction that I'm part of Burlington's Reparations Task Force, which is looking specifically at the question of chattel slavery and the prospect of reparations to the descendants of enslaved persons. One of the only cities that's exploring this kind of question across the US. And in my own work, I've looked much more at some of the later instances of discrimination and the ways in which housing segregation created the sorts of urban landscapes we have today: redlining, covenants, blockbusting, these kinds of different things. So I'm really interested in the ways in which we make or deny access to land for people on the basis of race, religion, national background, origin, all sorts of different kinds of things like that. At any rate, so the three sort of main kind of issues I wanted to raise, and again, I'm sure none of these will be unfamiliar to all of you and things that I've kind of seen across these different places and scales. The first, it has to do with transportation. And again, that may seem fairly straightforward, that in order to have a welcoming and a livable community, it has to be one in which people can access all kinds of different opportunity. So in this sense, it's not just about convenience, and certainly convenience is part of it. But one of the first things I did when I came to Vermont, when I settled in Vermont, was to do this work with refugee communities, looking at their mobility needs and barriers. So where is it that people needed to go to? And what was not being able to access those places? What were the outcomes of that? And it was really clear that there were negative consequences in terms of education, in terms of employment, in some cases in health outcomes. You know, Tilly Drive being an excellent example of this, when medical facilities move to Tilly Drive, and that's very accessible if you have a car, but really not if you don't. So that question of transportation, I think, really needs to stay top of mind. And transportation, really thinking across the diversity of population. You know, a sort of bike-friendly, walking-friendly city makes lots of sense unless you then think about the different kinds of ability that people have. How does age play into it? How does climate play into it? How does, you know, how does ice and snow in a particular climate like this affect things? At the same time, you know, having served on GMT, you know, I'm very aware of what the limitations of a regionally organized and funded transportation network, what that looks like, and what it can and what it can't do. We make a lot of assumptions and demands on our public infrastructure, but, you know, actually being able to pay for it is a whole other issue and question. The second topic that I know is also very significant here is the question of affordability. And housing access and affordability is something that really is a conundrum in all sorts of ways. I think we all know that this is a real barrier to growth. It's a barrier to growth. When we think about young families in particular, young people, where is it that people are going to settle if it is that we want to sort of build these sort of vibrant communities with young people who are going to be able to stay in the places that they grew up or went to school? I've lived in a lot of cities now where it seems utterly unaffordable. And I fear that the Burlington metro area is increasingly moving towards that kind of, I mean, it's well past that realization. But what we can do to address that situation is less clear than it is in some other places. You look at the Midwest, at certain rust belt cities, they have a kind of resource in that they have an overstock of housing, where there are municipal levers to then make some of those places accessible to certain populations as a result of having that overstock. We don't have that in the Northeast in general. You have a real absence of that kind of excess housing. So what do you do? What do you do when the federal government has moved out of the public housing game in a large sense? And what we really have is Section 8 programs, which do very little to actually make the market more accessible. So that question of accessibility across all sorts of landscapes, I think, is a really, really big one. And then finally, the comment that was made, the public comment that was made, and I'm sure that is on everyone's mind right now as well, is the climate crisis. You know, the climate crisis is not something that is off somewhere in the future, is something that we need to talk about in terms of future generations. It is here with a vengeance. It's been here, as I'm sure Dr. Dupinijerol will talk to us about. It's been here for some time. But we are at this sort of tipping point where decisions that we make cannot continue to be in the short-term interest. They have to be, I mean, honestly, it is in the short-term interest as well as in terms of long-term survival. So the continued shortcuts that we take are simply not going to cut it out. Here on the West Coast, you know, I got a few beautiful days, and the rest of it was covered in haze. I look out the window right now, and I see smoke from wildfires, the hottest temperatures on record here. So those kinds of, I think, questions have to be calibrated when we think about land equity and access. So I'll turn it over to my fellow panelists now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boz. I have a few slides that I'd like to share. Thank you for just making me the presenter here. Just need to close off some of these little additional windows. Okay, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for the very privileged invitation to be with you here this evening. Leslie Anne Dupinijerol coming to you from the Burlington metro area on the unceded territory of the Abenaki peoples, joining my co-presenter, Dr. Pablo Boz, from the Geography Department at UVM. I am a climatologist by training, and so a lot of the things that I'm going to be talking a little bit about are related to the atmosphere, the climate, water resources, and some of the things that we could be thinking about from more of a landscape perspective. And I'm glad Dr. Boz brought up a lot of the challenges around infrastructure, around transportation, because I have a couple of those in my prepared remarks as well. So we're thinking about climate. We're thinking about it as an entire system. And we're looking at all of the various moving multiple pieces that have brought us to this point. And it involves greenhouse gases. It involves the changes in ecosystems. It involves the air that we breathe. Dr. Boz was just talking about forest fires out west. We saw those coming towards us in terms of the smoke pollution over the last few weeks. And so all of the things that make up the earth atmosphere, water conditions, soil conditions are critically important to us as human beings. And so I'm going to focus a lot of my remarks on peoples, because for me, peoples come first in looking at all of the ways that we're trying to address climate change and how do we make sure that we're taking care of our peoples? And in particular, a lot of things that we're seeing, like floods and droughts, like forest fires, like extreme temperatures, like extreme heat conditions, cold conditions, those are things that are important to us because we, as human beings, we as societies, we as cultures, have sort of thrived within certain boundaries. And it's when we get outside of those boundaries, when we get wildfires, when we get heat waves, when we get drought conditions, when we get flood conditions. In other words, when we exceed a lot of those boundaries, that's when we start to see a lot of human vulnerability, a lot of challenges from a human perspective, from a society perspective. And so we're seeing that playing out right now. And so the challenge becomes, will that push us to some of those tipping points that Dr. Boz was just mentioning? And so there are a couple of resources that I'm going to leave for you. I'm going to put those into the chat so that we can take a look at it. And one of them is, how do we look at climate change here on a sort of zip code level? And there's a website called Climate Explorer. I'm going to put this website here in the chat for you when I'm all done. You can type in zip codes, 0543 for South Burlington. And what it will do, it will show you both past climate change, but also future projected climate change. And that's one of the things that we're trying to do from planning perspective. What is it we're planning for? And how does that sort of mesh with some of the things that we've seen in the past? So if we do have time as part of the panel discussion, maybe I can come back and demo this for you. But it's one of the resources that I think is really important so that you can see what Burlington looks like versus Winuski versus South Burlington in what does climate change mean for us on a really on-the-ground, local scale. And when we think about it, when we think about who is vulnerable, what is vulnerable, this is some work from another colleague of mine in the Geography Department at UVM, Dr. Sherri Morse, in looking at all of the ways that have led us to this particular point in time and space, whether it's from a historical perspective, whether it's from a mobility perspective, whether it's from an immigration perspective, a gender perspective, all of the things that make us vulnerable, both as human beings, but also from a landscape as well. And as we're looking at that and we're thinking about, because I said I'm putting peoples first, who are the peoples that are particularly vulnerable? We can think about our elderly communities, our children, our low-income communities, some communities of color that are particularly vulnerable historically, but also from an ongoing basis. And what COVID-19 has done is it's sort of peeled off the Band-Aid from sort of hiding a lot of those racial inequalities, a lot of those inherent vulnerabilities, and putting them front and center. So last year, we saw a lot of heat waves. We saw heat waves again this year, earlier in the year. And one community that was brought to the fore when we have heat waves are the unhoused, the folks who do not have a home. So when you hear things like shelter in place or go to a cooling center, do we have cooling centers that are publicly available, that everybody knows where they are, so that we can take care of all peoples? And so we're thinking of all of these changes, especially if things like heat waves are becoming more and more prevalent and more and more frequent. The other thing too is we need to think about where we are. And so in Vermont, because we're so far to the north, we're not as acclimated to really high temperatures. And so the temperature that we now warn for, like we had some warnings in the last few weeks, the temperature that we now warn for is 87 degrees Fahrenheit. And when we start getting those warnings, we're starting to see either increases in emergency room visits and so forth. And so temperature is one thing that we really need to sort of pay attention to, especially on a city scale. Couple of the things that we're looking at are changes in Lyme disease. Whenever I give a talk, folks always ask me about increases in Lyme disease. And because we are still dependent on cars for transportation, on vehicles for transportation, we need to think about one of the emissions that comes from cars and vehicles, which is ozone. And then the last piece in here that has also been realized in the last 12 to 18 months is folks being able to move from one place to the next as a result of either climate or as a result of COVID. And so looking at where we are here in South Burlington, we see in the Champlain Valley, we tend to have higher numbers of these days where we get over 87 degrees Fahrenheit. So again, that is something that we need to kind of factor in from a human perspective. And this is playing out, continues to play out. It's one of the conversations that I listen to my colleagues bring to the table as part of the Vermont Climate Council. Where are we seeing folks move into the state? What does that mean for local towns, smaller towns? What does it mean for sewer conditions? What does it mean for permitting? And this is something I think we also need to think about here. So thinking about all of these from a people's perspective, South Burlington, Burlington, Colchester, Winuski, Shelburne are all intertwined. And so when we're thinking about some of the things that we need conversation-wise, I'm going to propose that it be a multi-jurisdictional approach because one town or one city may not have the resources to do the heavy lift by itself. And so there's going to need to be a lot of multi-connections working in place. And the other thing is, as we think about having some of these conversations, we need to make sure that all peoples are here from the very beginning. And as we look at how migration sort of plays out, Dr. Boz was talking about that, making sure that we're able to serve our incoming residents of all income levels, of all languages, of all cultures, so that we not only have a welcoming place, but a place where everybody thrives. And as we think about our space, right now, we have fairly developed areas surrounded by less developed areas as part of that mix in South Burlington. And what does that mean for us in thinking about multi-use spaces, both in our existing places, but also in any development regions that are being planned? And how easy is it for us to get access to those? And so thinking about some of those issues in terms of transit, right now, we don't have a lot of heavily trafficked or very, very frequent mass transit. And what would that mean if we were to have that? And what would it mean for folks to be able to use that and maybe to leave their cars at home? And what does the connectivity look like? And I'm glad that Professor Boz brought up Tilly Drive in particular, because a lot of our medical facilities are literally on the outskirts of South Burlington. And so what does that mean for everybody to be able to access those facilities in a way that if they do not have access to a car, could we be providing shuttle service, for example? And then the next piece in all of this is who's paying for it? So Professor Boz brought up funding. I'm going to bring up one other piece, which is a taxation piece. I know the bills just went out. And so how do we make sure that we're not overstrapping people, but at the same time actually doing this in a way that maybe bring some ARPA funding in? There's a lot of funding that's going to be coming down the pike from the federal government, particularly on the adaptation side. I heard about that today from some of my NOAA colleagues. And so how do we make sure that we pre-position ourselves to take advantage of some of these resources that are coming down the pike? So an example of these multi-use, multipurpose types of retrofits is an example that you see here from the Northeast chapter of the National Climate Assessment, which I was the lead of. And it's a shot from downtown Manhattan where, when they built back, these are grates that are multifunctional. So we've got the benches for public transit. We have your bike racks. But then they're also elevated so that we're trying to minimize water, stormwater running into the subways. We don't have subways here, but we can use this sort of thinking in terms of how do we plan spaces? How do we plan facilities to get maximum benefit from the buck? And so switching gears a little bit and thinking about going back to the gases that we pump into the atmosphere that cause the warming of the atmosphere. Most of the time, we hear a lot about carbon dioxide. We also hear about methane. But to sort of expand, why do we need to think about greenhouse gases? Why do we need to know which gases we're mitigating against? Tropospheric ozone occurs when we do a lot of driving. And so because we're thinking about trying to make our city more walkable, more user-friendly, what will that do for having a lot of ozone that usually gets emitted when we drive, but also gets emitted from factories? What would that do for reducing some of those emissions? Why do we care? We care because ozone is one of those pollutants that then creates smog in the atmosphere. And so thinking about where we are, we are right next to the Green Mountains. And so what this diagram is supposed to be showing you is a Green Mountain sort of like in the background. And when there's too much smog in the atmosphere, we look at the, against the backdrop of the Green Mountains, and it looks like pea soup, you know, that's sort of like grayish, greenish color because we've got too many pollutants in the atmosphere. And so our geography, our physical geography really does matter because it then sets up particular vulnerabilities for us from an environmental perspective. So all of this... So all of this by way of thinking about the gases that we are looking at to try to reduce. So ozone and nitrogen dioxide are two greenhouse gases that we need to think about as we sort of move forward. So not just carbon dioxide, not just methane, but also look some of these from a human perspective. So nitrogen dioxide, just like ozone, contributes to acid rain. And it's also an irritant for lung and respiratory folks who have pre-existing conditions from that perspective. And we had a very interesting experiment play out last year with the shutdown and what happens to nitrogen dioxide as a greenhouse gas when we stop driving, when we stop doing a lot of manufacturing, and we saw those levels dramatically decrease because it's a very, very short-lived gas. And when we went back into production, those levels started to increase again. So we've seen what we could do if we decrease production, if we decrease our driving. It's one of those things we sort of need to keep in mind in terms of how do we use some of that real-time information moving forward. So from an environmental perspective, I'm just going to leave some of these thoughts. How do we consider that multi-use? How do we consider the various pieces that make up South Burlington? Where you've got both urban, suburban, but also rural conditions? And so how do we make sure that we preserve our wetlands? Because our wetlands are particularly important from a stormwater perspective, but they're also important from a carbon sequestration perspective. How do we make sure that we're preserving our working lands as well as our natural lands? Because again, critically important from a greenhouse gas adaptation and mitigation perspective. And then the last thing is, South Burlington soils have a lot of clay in them. And that is going to set up again additional challenges for how do we think about either building structures, but also drought, which is another piece in the whole climate change puzzle that we're looking at here. So I'm going to leave, this is my last slide. The Chicago municipal area produced a climate action plan that was released about two weeks ago. They have some very, very critical and direct concrete strategies in there that we can learn from. And so as soon as I'm finished here, I'm going to pop this URL into the chat so that folks have access to getting these resources and can digest them a little bit more. Because I know I talked a lot about a lot of stuff in a short amount of time, but I wanted to at least get those out in front of you. So please, all of these resources, I would love to share with the councilors and members of the public afterwards to make sure that we are able to sort of take a deep dive in and digest this. So with that, I am going to try to stop sharing my screen here and turn it back over to our folks in the room.
You pick it up from where Dr. Who left it off? Oh, we're waiting for the microphone.
Yeah, we're going to, this one seems to be working better. Stick with that one for the time.
Hi, my name is Liz Warren. I'm here. I took a student perspective. I've suddenly just graduated from UVM and I have a lot of different people experienced our struggles with housing. But also I've worked at the Y MCA for four years in Burlington. I've entered the interview center, working on food access, to recognize yourself in Vermont. I've had a lot of different experiences, areas that people have faced. But as far as students, from the experience that I've had talking to students, like most people love it, they're working here, they're living here. How has it been such a struggle and such a barrier for us to come here? Now I know my age, it's kind of fifty percent of our income for rent. During winter, it goes up to usually around seventy percent of our income with food costs. And that's really difficult when we're making decisions about where to stay after graduation. It's a large role in that decision. And also just my experience, like the place I'm living right now, I spent at least two weeks before I had to move out. I didn't have no housing in two weeks. I was looking for months, every single day, looking for housing, couldn't find anything. I wasn't accessible to school, inaccessible to my work. And I know a lot of people in those same positions. I've heard people have to move back with their parents because they couldn't find housing. Having run out of support for them, where they need to be. I know Vermont residents as well, people have grown up in the state of Vermont for decades. They have to go move back in their parents' backs. So this is where they came from, because they couldn't find anything.
Can you try bring like a little closer?
So as far as that experience, I'd say weatherization of existing buildings is huge. During the winter, my utilities went up three hundred percent because of heating costs. And I think efficiency in housing is super key, not only from a climate standpoint, it just has some efficiency in making sure our urban footprint is smaller, but also just from an access standpoint, finances and costs, as well as keeping in mind wages and minimum wage again, what percent of income is my housing? Because if all of our incomes are in housing, then that brings up different problems with food security and transportation and different personal budget being lower because of how much money we're spending on that. I work with someone right now on a farm who was trying to relocate to Vermont for months and months and could not find anything. And it took them months to be able to get up here and find a job. So that's something that I've experienced as well also on the farm right now. We have five good workers who come over every year to work in agriculture. And one of my coworkers has come over for nine, ten years, working on the same farm, staying in the same house. We started the house that he stayed in every summer, it was old. And there was nowhere for him to stay. So instead of coming over and contributing to our cultural economy for three months, he came over for three weeks and had to stay in the house on the farm that people lived there because there was nowhere else for him to live. So that's just all again, a lot of the things that I've experienced with housing and access. I think food access and access to creatives is a huge thing, I think, for a lot of people. It's the drawdown to Vermont and to live in places like this. And preserving those places for emotional and mental health, for physical health, for access to food, as well as wildlife corridors and climate resilience. And all those things are super, super important as well. So yeah, that's kind of my experience, things that I would ask you to keep in mind, especially trying to retain a young and diverse population here. Those are some of the things that are the most important to the communities that I've come in contact with and some of the biggest things on our minds, especially for our recent graduates who are trying to stay in the area. Access to transportation is also huge. I would echo what I was saying on that. I know a lot of students who try to come up here without cars, try to limit their bringing of individual vehicles up here. And a lot of the people that I've talked to have found that eventually it grows a little impossible to be up here without a car and to eventually end up bringing their cars up, whether it's for access to jobs, access to work, access to grocery stores, things like that. Obviously, as we want to try to eventually move towards a place that has less cars, try to minimize impact of cars, and that's really important to keep in mind as well. But yeah, that's most of what I have to say.
If you want to pass this on to Chief Minard. Thank you.
Thank you for joining me here. My situation is probably a little bit different than what I was in together in the last time. Being the chief of the district, I could, we have over thirty-five hundred members. And so we end up seeing a lot of people that are tired of being a lot of things. I'm telling you, it's a big thing. It's like Liz was saying, not the, you know, younger generations moving into their parents because they can't afford the rent, so I mean, it's all over. Being in Franklin County, we're kind of a disaster. We're not, who could have been here because we don't have a job? So, and that's where we come into play.
Can you please hold the mic a little closer? Thank you.
That's where we come into play. We run a night food show. You know, the top lid prior to COVID-19, and we're feeding like two or three hundred people. But that's last month, it was rather dire. And it just seems to be growing. This is how many volunteers. We have to raise our own money, the donations, the grant money, whatever. And this is a struggle. We also make little deliveries to people by our own now. In some cases, when the car broke down, we can't afford to fix them or just go on and on. But one of the big, I mean, one of the bigger things is, like I said, talk about taxation. They can't afford their taxes. And the season only went up for sale. So they try to get into a mode of housing. And those are fault, you've got to stand in line. They take a year to get in there, you've got to suffer the whole process. And most situations, the houses are kind of smaller than they should be because, you know, because now they've had their kids move in with their grandchildren. And it was too hard for them, you know, I mean, that, there are some situations where people are living in trailer, camping through the land. It's terrible, but you get it, it's uncomfortable. But growing up, like I say, it's, you know, it's all kind of a play from, and we see a lot of side cases, but we just, this is not for majors. We give it to all community members, anybody comes to that door, that's cool, we yield food. We also give up, we have a lot of coaling that's been donated because if they need coal, they can give coal. Wherever they need it. So we try to help as much as possible. I mean, that's been one of my biggest priorities, is trying to help the community. And that time has been a struggle. You know, it's like I talked about, one of the volunteers today, we're all volunteers. He said, we just got a light going on for last month, four hundred and sixty dollars. It don't seem like much, but when you don't have it, you have to look at donations or whatever because we got freezers running, we got refrigerators running, trying to keep food fresh. And we, they grow the hours, the community center for us. And yeah, so that big, you're not a school chef. And I'm saying that we have a lot of school chefs in the state right now because we have the disaster, it's, we're probably not going to have much to return. And that, like I said, it all ties into everything that, you know, people are going to have food, and also they're going to be able to have a place to live. And of course, when everyone's coming up, everybody has the same problem. We've got to eat in place as well, we have to eat in place. So we're no longer out of life, though, we've got to eat, you know. Although, you know, all that is in. That's basically all I have to say. I mean, you know, if people think, want to develop something, want to keep in mind that, you know, trying to convince housing with larger rooms, food box. I really to see food pots, close to these projects, where they, you know, within walking distance of the foster. And I spent five years in the neighborhood. And that's a pretty populated country, that's back in the sixties. But in the cities, they have food pots. And they're also, they're not very big, but it's not from the coast. But they also supply on their step forms, where these stores are, they're able to something to keep their current now. Not too far away from the water store, but they can show up. They're taking a lot of their plants, not that the lot kind of much. So, you know, those things are the work into the system. As a person lost their job, developing, trying to work this again. You know, if they didn't grow some of their own, their trees, their purebuns, their green beans, you know. We have a shirt on cheese in here, but those families are only there since they're always in. While I was here, I had this tall garden, probably twenty-five, sixty. And I think right now, that's his tall garden.
Yeah.
But this year, I mean, I, I went out and ate some potatoes, they're your short potatoes. And I said, well, try to get some potatoes, at least you'll be able to feed right. And then I have seven children, a lot of grandchildren, great grandchildren, whatever. I said, I'll grow potatoes, I can add these to the seed potatoes. He said, you want to let it ripen down? Would that do the shoulder? I said, oh, okay. So I said, wow, I haven't listened to you. I went back to the food shop, they're going to be strobing, they're going to feed the pigs, they're going to sell them obviously. They'll grow. So I had a lot of potatoes, I could get them together. I had a lot of potatoes. I got four rows, thirty-four rows, so. But that's kind of the thing we want to do, you know. We had the opportunity to get a food pot, a farm, and it was like five miles away, way up the mountains. No water store for us, so we got to have something that's close by, you know. Hopefully, they're sure to have these food boxes in front of our land so that we can grow a little bit into the, by the land trust. There's two words on it, we got some last year.
What are food boxes? What are food boxes?
Raised bits?
Raised bits, sorry. It's just, you know, that kind of thing. That's all I would say, the question, do I answer?
Thank you. I think we'll do the questions at the end, so, but thank you.
Chief Stephen, that's the final speaker.
Yeah, quickly, you know, a lot of me for allowing you to be here. So greetings, thank you, friends, for allowing me to speak. As Chief Minard just mentioned, the government, we're worse off than, each tribe is suffering. We have our own governments, so we try to take care of our people the best we can. It's kind of hard when our land was removed from us. And I know, now he and we, we are probably second largest tribe in Vermont, behind the Sisloin. And we have sixty-eight acres of land for our entire population of Vermont. And I don't think you have much more than that. Maybe you do, but it's not enough to grow food. Yeah, yeah, so, so what I'm saying is, we, since that land was removed from us, we rely on others to help us. So it's, I call it food security, not food sovereignty. There goes food sovereignty, we could grow our food without being removed from it, you know. To break it down quickly, because we have the same thing, we have food gel. We, you know, we have actually three food distribution sites, all in Vermont. We have elementary school, we work with food bank. We have one in our, at my house, I distribute to local people. We have one in Concord, New Hampshire, because our citizens are throughout our territory, the Westman, I think, territory. We try to feed as many of our citizens as we can and others as we can. But when it relates to what you have us here for, because we rely on donations and grants, just probably the same thing that Chief Minard has mentioned. We all have the same troubles. But in a relationship to what you should do when you're planning things, it breaks it down to a simple question. When you were governing, when you were making rules, what would you want your grandmother to have? What would you want your child to have? Would you want your grandmother to walk ten months? Or would you want her to be able to hop on a bus and get to the grocery store? Would you want her to be able to walk outside her door and plant some flowers, plant some food, or tomatoes, or whatever she could? Or would you want her to have to go, you know, away someplace to get food? So when you're, when you're looking at things from a perspective of what do we need? Whether it be an immigrant population who don't have vehicles, or are used to growing their own food and other things, what is common sense? What can you do? What can you do to make that as if your grandmother was going to be doing it or your child was going to be doing it? Simple, simple look at it. Native people have a unique perspective on how we view the world. We, we figured a long time ago, we've been here for thousands of years, that we had, we had natural cycles of the environment. We've been, there, there's natural cycles. What we did to that, those cycles is, is what really what we're talking about. We're, humans are impacting the natural cycles of climate change and causing it to go haywire. We, we had a balance. We, we look at things in three dimensions. So I want to challenge the thought when, um, when we were talking about people come first, and we have to look at it just from a human perspective. In our view, we, we look at things in three dimension as we didn't own this place, we stewarded it. How can you own something that you share with other living beings like plants and animals? So how we manage, we rely on the, the, the animals for food. We rely on the plants for medicines, for other things, right? So how do we, when we're, when we're doing these projects, how do we think of those other living creatures? Because what we do to them would do to ourselves. So are you building those nesting boxes? Are you building those places that would enhance wildlife? Are you, are you providing a place for the plants to grow? And, and like agro forestry, right? Instead of planting a, a, a pine tree, plant a butternut tree. Okay, not only can humans eat the butternuts, but so can the squirrels and other types of animals. You're creating a food system where you would naturally plant a tree anyway. So you have to make a choice between do I plant a fruit or nut tree? Or do I plant just a, a weeping willow tree? Well, the fact is, if you want to suck up water, if you want to suck up water, then you probably want to plant a willow tree. But I'm saying is, you, you have to look at it in a way that how do you enhance the other beings around you? And I'll give you the perfect example. It was like, when you're plume like champlain, okay, you can put chlorine in the water and drink it. That's great for humans, but what are you doing to the fish? What are you doing to the animals? And what are you doing to the, the birds that live off those things? We know, we're seeing decreases in insects, we're seeing decreases in animals, we're seeing things going extinct. And for God's sakes, don't cut down on all the ash trees just because of the cost, okay? We rely on those, we, that's part of our creation stories. We stepped out of an ash tree by Bill Stoppin, who carved, carved this, I'm gonna carve it. He carved the tree and we stepped out of it. That's part of our creation stories. If you look at how when we had the Dutch apple disease, or we had the butternut disease, guess what? Some of those survived. And we took those plants that survived and took the seedlings and brought those things back. But if you go down and clear cut all your ash trees, are you, are you saving seeds? Are you saving seedlings and saplings to replant? Or are you just doing the work of the ash wood, cut them all down because you want to spend thousand dollars later on? So think about those kind of things, right? They're maybe, you have to give them time to build a immunity, community or, or some disease. If you've got a colony, you've got a colony, but don't do, don't just automatically think in a human form, just cut. Uh, that's, these are the ways that I think you should, um, think about how to look at the natural world around you and how do we interact with it? You know, uh, Dick could probably tell you this, but we need to reconnect our youth to the source. When I say source, I mean spiritual source, food source, economic source. Let me give you a perfect example, the lake parades. My grandfather had farm, okay? He had a maple apple tree. He didn't spray it, right? Whatever dropped on the ground, the cows got it, or we got it, or the bears got it, right? But I'd pick a bunch of apples and may have one of the spot. And I say, Grant, what do you want to do with this? He'd say, well, cut out the spot, meat it, some water, eat pie. He goes, well, then give it to Grandma, I made pie. Well, she's already made a tree. Well, okay, throw it in the bucket, we'll mix it. There was always a use for it, and you always knew where that food came from because you had your hands in it. Nowadays, whoever has teenagers who are used to being behind a computer screen all the time, they can wait for mom and dad and bring a bag of apples home. You can't tell me that all you guys don't go into the store, look over here at the apple, make sure there's not a damaged spot. And if there is, you set it aside, grab the purr, right? And you put it in the bag. And then if it happened to get damaged on the way home and gets in the fridge, teenager walks up and opens the drawer to get an apple, pick it up and sees the spot. They either put it back in the drawer and give it to somebody else and take one that doesn't have a spot, or they throw it in the trash for your mom and dad, or they run back home. So they don't connect what it took to get that bag of apples into their house. They didn't have to go pick it. They didn't have to go, you know, preserve it. They didn't have to do anything. When people are not connected to their struggles, they tend not to care about it because it's somebody else's problem. And when it's somebody else's problem, everything goes to crap. We've seen it, right? Oh, that's somebody else's problem, let them fix this, so we problem. Oh, okay, they just don't, they didn't delay because there was an overflow of water. Just give me my, my tap, my tap water, I'll throw a quart of that in the back. Somebody can fix that. Or, you know, hey, there's a, there's a shortage. How come people aren't giving me a bag of apples, right? Instead of going out and picking their own. So what I mean is, we, we have to encourage, part of what Knowhian does is we get into the schools, we start building those gardens so the kids get their hands dirty. And it doesn't take months to have a potter plant instead of making a flower or tomato plant, right? We help with the snack program so they can help. So now you can buy with those seedlings and stuff using your debit card, your, your food card. I used to say food stamps, but it's a card now. The same applies to law, where you can get actual garden products, grow your own. So if you grow ten, it's a volume one. Encourage those things. So these are the things that we do, like Knowhian, um, one of the things we're working on is a three-pronged approach. If you go to our website, nide tribe.org, or the partnerships, they have a three-pronged approach. One is because we don't have our land anymore, and we don't have the needs to them. We have to work within the European system. So I work with the state of Vermont Fish and Wildlife, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife, AC National Resources, State Parks and Rents, and all kinds of businesses or organizations to give us access to lands to pick our natural foods, medicines, and artistry. That also includes all four tribes. Sisboy has the same rights as El Nu, myself. Those are for all of our tribes. Uh, and then anywhere tribes can pull them off our website and download them, they can access these lands to, to get our natural foods, medicines. That's the first problem, because we need access to our natural, our food like our ancestors did. The second approach was I've worked with a lot of, um, I've worked with three colleges and Nova, we did it in Vermont, and a few, I, in order to feed our people, since we don't have any land, I started partnering with Sterling College for creative seed bank. And Fred Weisman with the seeds we grow, who's a citizen, uh, was, uh, working on bringing back our ancient seeds. Well, I just, it did help take it in another direction as well. So when they're growing those produce for the seeds to provide those seeds to our citizens to grow their own, we provide produce to our food shops, our free distribution sites. And we educate the college students at the same time. Then we branch into Millair College, and we're, we're working with them to do the same program. And then we branch into the UVM Border Cultural Farm, along with the UVM Extension Service. Uh, and the seeds we grow are at the UVM Border Cultural Farm as well. And we have fifteen growers from Nova. That I just, I have, I have farmers that want to help us, or businesses that want to help grow our food. Last year, we did about seven hundred pounds of squash, two hundred pounds of beans, and we had a few hundred pounds of, uh, cornmeal to feed our, that's the three systems, cornmeal, beans, and squash, that's part of our story. We started distributing them, we provided education to the schools, and we all got something out of it. This year, our program has exploded. Uh, not only have we been working with the four, the three colleges, but they tripled their production because now they have students. And we got forty growers from Nova. We got, we got a lot of food that's gonna be coming. And whatever we can't use or the other tribes can't use, we're gonna give it to the resettlement program or some other program to help feed others. That's a successful program. That's the second problem. Natural food and medicines, working with their partners to grow food for us. The last problem is, we also grow, we have twenty-four head vices. We have a vices farm that Knowhian owns, is in Shore in Vermont. Uh, we don't own a farm anymore, but we have twenty-four vices. Uh, and we also produce beef. So we, we slaughter, we got two coming up that we're working on that slaughter. And we provide that food to our citizens at those three locations. And we help others that are in need, just like Dick has said, that he's grateful if he helps anybody who comes to the table who's hungry. We do the same. We've helped the Sisboy citizens, we've helped El Nu citizens, we've helped Corstha. We help our own as much as we can. So those are the three-pronged approaches for food security, not food sovereignty. We can't have sovereignty until we have our own land. But our food security. So part of the things that's our role to do, our role then, give us access to your lands to be able to gather nuts, medicines, food. Same thing, we're working with us to help grow community, you know, uh, community, uh, food systems that not only feed our people, but others. You know, build those things like Chief said, right up your door to allow the resettlement people who are used to growing their own food or others to grow their own food. Give them a sense of security. Then, then you can build programs around those. How do you can your food to preserve? Or how do you, how do you freeze your stuff to preserve? So anyway, I won't go into that too far, but my, my point being is make those natural choices. Agro forestry, example. Think of the plants, the animals that are helping to use your lands that are next to you because it's important that that wildlife be there and not just for us, but for our future. You know, do the pollinators, plant the gardens for the pollinators, plant all these things. Put on the high somewhere if you wanted to, that must pollinate the gardens. You know, you can build a whole structure to rent these things. It doesn't cost a ton of money, it just costs, takes time and things to do. Where are those people who know something? We've been around them a whole lot. Our people have been around, we use our knowledge. See, what happens is people forget that we have those ancient knowledge and, and that we're, that we're somehow gone, we're not here. And they go about their own way, then they wonder why sometimes things go sideways. I think if you use our resources and help pay for those resources to have people come in and advise or consult, whether it be to Sisboy, whether it be Knowhian, or anybody, I think, you know, you'll be a lot better. For, so you have that respect. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there. But I just wanted to let you know that, um, we've done all this, and Chief has done all this with no renewable resources. We, we're, it's our ingenuity, the, the, the grants that we can get, the people that can donate to us. So, um, we've done pretty good, I think, for what we, what we have. I think we're, we're feeding a lot of people and, and off nothing. Instead of our ingenuity, and I think, I think I can insist with a lot of credit. I mean, we're feeding a lot of people. You know, how many, how many of you can say they're doing it, right? I mean, it's sad that we have to feed them. What I'm saying is, that's a big number. We're about two, two hundred probably, but we're, we're having a haul in Vermont. If you've ever been there, you know, you go to Kansas, take a ride and try to drive three miles, that's, that's hauling. So, I mean, we're not in a populous area. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of our speakers. I hope that people can hear us online. They know that it's a little bit hirgendous and we will, we'll do our best to speak up. Um, what I just wanted to say is, in addition to thanking you for, for speaking to us and sharing your experiences and your expertise and your knowledge, I just wanted to draw it together. Um, we, as a council, signed on to the Paris Climate Freedom, which acknowledges that climate change action is inherently linked to reducing poverty, reducing food insecurity, reducing the basics. We have to go back to the basics. And I think that all of our speakers spoke to that. What are the basics? We need to eat. We need to have a place to live and that we can afford to live in, right? And I think the third one is that we're mobile people. And we move to get our food, we move to get our services, we move, uh, to, to do these things. And so I think that when we think about those three, if you think about a stool, those three fonts of the stool, when we are seeing, as, as Dr. Bo said, we're seeing home prices skyrocket, that we, as a community, have to think about how we can, we have, we have an affordable housing committee for that. We hope to hear more from them. How we can serve the people who see that three hundred percent increase over the winter in their electricity bills and, and knowing that they live on this budget? And how can we provide housing, um, as a community in order for those people to be able to make ends meet? And section eight is limited, like Dr. Bo said. Um, so we need to think, we need to think creatively. Um, because I'm not sure that we're headed on that path yet. I think we need to divert. Um, and I'm gonna now pass it along. I see a question here from Councilor Chittin, Senator also.
Can everybody hear me? I have a comment to Chief Stevens and a question to Dr. Bo. Uh, one, I would love, if we had time tonight, maybe to follow up to have your lens on our planning developments that they, I think, Christian is doing, that they get speed to, but I want to make sure that if there's that possibility in the future, that your comments about, uh, the gardens that you're moving, what types of trees and so on, are back in it all, right? What my mission is going. Uh, two, I can never remember ash trees spring that night. That would have been the word for the Emerald Ash Order, turning the trees down. Thank you for that. It's very useful to hear. And lastly, I asked some of those teenagers that. Uh, to Senator, uh, not Senator, Dr. Bo's, uh, for me after the loops there. Uh, I wanted to come back to your comments because that's how I understood a lot of the focus tonight on land use equity. You've been on three things that I can definitely relate to that come up in our discussions. Uh, we talked about public transportation affordability and the climate crisis. Uh, the South Burlington Land Trust, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that organization, but they're a group here, a very strong group here in South Burlington. They're advocating for the city of South Burlington to buy about nineteen parcels of land as they become available in different ways. Uh, and what someone argued is the most absolute quadrant of our city, arguing it is partly to address the climate crisis. Concerns have been raised from various corners that this is, that this could be perceived as perpetuating class stratification in our housing, using the levers of local government, perpetuating inequity. Uh, this has been called by some re-mining, it's also been called class discrimination, marked as a non-employment. Uh, I heard you're speaking about public transportation affordability and climate crisis. So what I'd love to hear your thoughts on is, as we look at South Burlington as proximity to the city of Burlington, being close to the largest city in the great state of Vermont, uh, in the metropolitan area of Chittin County, as we look at the undeveloped lands along Dorset Street, which have current access to public utilities, including water, sewer, power, the, uh, gas, as well, as well as public transportation. I, I would wonder, hear your thoughts on addressing public transportation, how to expand it both financially in a feasible way, as, for both the provider for non-transit, as well as the liner, and how they spend their time using public transportation. I wonder your thoughts on public transportation expansions to South Burlington as opposed to, say, Heinsberg, Swanton, Milton, uh, the further, I want to use the right term. I don't know if this is an appropriate term, and you could speak to this, I'm familiar with some of your research, sir, excerpts. So like beyond the suburb, the further flowing areas. My, my concern is that by over conserving land in South Burlington, it's pushing, uh, development further away from our city centers, thus exacerbating our transportation infrastructure and requirement for climate emissions with current fuel sources for vehicles, but also making it more expensive for individuals in both time and duplicative, redundant infrastructure. So if you could comment on land conservation in areas like South Burlington, where a dollar per acre is going to go near as far as, say, a dollar in Heinsberg or maybe you're further, like in Monden where you are, if we can conserve more of those lands there at a lower price, is that a better land use strategy to, to foster the type of growth in the close city of South Burlington, which is adjacent to just south of the largest city of Burlington?
It's ten persons. I just want to add, it's ten out of twenty-five.
So I don't know if that was framing all of your, Dr. Bo, but I'd love for you to come back to some of the comments about land acquisition from the city purpose to prevent, prevent growth on in South Burlington, weighing that against other uses of our resources for land conservation in other areas further away from our natural.
Sure, um, I, I'd be happy to, to respond. I mean, there's sort of two different parts to your question. The first part's around, I'll come back to the question about. Um, the first part's around, I'll come back to the question about conservation, um, and land trusts and, and sort of other sort of points into the funnel, let me start with that. One of the really interesting contradictions I've sometimes found, um, in looking at these different cities that I've worked in is some of the land that is conserved today, some of the best land that you find, you know, I'm here in Vancouver, there's this beautiful area called Stanley Park and everybody is really happy that, you know, it was conserved a hundred years ago. But it was conserved basically because rich people wanted a natural area that they could access. And really the, the opposite model was Coney Island, a place that was much more densely populated, much easier to get to by the working class, like, so there's often this kind of like interesting, um, sort of dilemma in terms of what is conserved and for whom. And I think it raises a lot of these kind of interesting questions about like, what are the unintended consequences of the ways in which you think about conservation? And I, I do think one of the challenges is that when you don't think about development in the broader kind of regional scale, it can sometimes be a real challenge. This was a, a big sort of eye opener for me coming to Vermont. I love the, the sort of, the decentralized nature of Vermont, but there are all sorts of times in which it doesn't really make a lot of sense, there's a lot of redundancy, there's a lot of duplication. And in some cases, and transportation is a perfect example of it. I also think that a lot of times this question of development itself is a really big part of this, is like, well, where have you already developed and what makes sense to continue to develop in certain places versus others? Um, you know, in Burlington, people will often bemoan like the pit and like, fair enough, you know, and it's like, what are we going to do with this mall? But the fact is that you still have that mall, you still have to do, or whatever the, the, the shell of what it was, you still have to deal with the decisions that were made in the past. Now, of course, you have the decisions that you take now, but I've been thinking about this a lot as I've been very involved in the development of new resettlement, refugee resettlement sites in Vermont. And the decision was really made, like, to look outside of, uh, the Burlington metro area. Um, and as you may be aware, we've been working pretty hard on, on setting something out, up, out in Brattleboro. Um, my wife is from the Northeast Kingdom and, you know, she has this grand vision at some point to try and see if that we could make, uh, resettlement work out in a place like that. And so, I mean, this kind of idea of like, how do you think beyond kind of the places you are? That's one part of this, this, um, this situation. And of course, when you start looking outside of Chittenden County, how do you deal with the transportation issue? Yes, transportation isn't perfect by any means in Chittenden County, but it's better than it is in a lot of other places. So from a logical perspective, i- it makes a lot more sense to build on what you have already and try and build up, um, you know, the, the whole notion of kind of denser, densification in your urbanization strategy, rather than continually pushing out to kind of other places. But I think that that's balanced by these other kinds of, uh, of needs and desires. I can't speak to the specific parcels you're talking about, um, within South Burlington and whether it makes more or less sense to kind of focus on conservation in those particular places versus another place, but I definitely think that there, there is that kind of unintended consequence of, are you pushing, um, development out further and further? Here in Vancouver, I, I've seen that, that as development gets pushed further and further and further out, um, you know, those places that are conserved, who are they in the end conserved for? The argument that's often made here is that they're, they're being conserved for wealthy people in the inner core of the city who can afford it. So that I think is, is definitely, I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but I do think that that's one, one concern that comes up.
To ask a specific question, just for background, those parcels were involved in an eighteen-month study vetted in the public process, it's the most sensitive natural areas of our city, many of them are already preserved. Um, and so the, the parcels that he's referring to are mostly preserved already. Um, and I also know that we have done an economic study of that and they are worth up to two hundred forty million dollars in water filtration, wetland, we're all preparing for climate change here and so it is something that is part of that study. But I'm happy to turn that question over to Dr. Dupine Ue, as well as to our, our three panelists here. You know, how would you envision that inner city? Are inner cities to be developed again or were they things to be left in the past? We've been talking about having gardening plots, uh, and, and providing for our, our most vulnerable populations and not only for the housing, but also for their other basic needs like mobility, but also the food production. So inner, I come from just the Chicago area, the inner city of Chicago, they are clawing back to get land to have bees, to have garden plots that they did not have for decades, and these are our most vulnerable populations.
So I think it would be great if we did have, um, some of those communal spaces to have things like garden plots. I'm not sure if we're currently set up for that, that's part of the challenge. Um, and Professor Boz could probably speak a little bit better to that because he does work in, in a cities more so than I do. But I think if you're thinking about the existing stock versus where we would like to be, that's where some of that rubber meets the road.
Can I just follow up a little quickly on the clarification that you just, um, offered around, uh, the, the kind of other uses of wetlands and naturally conserved spaces, because I do think that that is a really, really important um, part of the equation, um, referring to a different urban space in Calcutta. Um, you know, Calcutta is a city, as I said, of thirteen million people. It has, the, its sewage and drainage system is from the British period. And really what it has as a, um, a natural filtration system is in fact its wetlands. And it's been, uh, conserved, it's really important, um, to recognize that kind of service that it, it provides. Also, I think Dr. Dupine Giroux is absolutely right that it is difficult to convert, uh, into, um, whether aquaculture, pisciculture, other kinds of, um, you know, productive usages. Um, but it also contains a significant, um, sort of dollar value attached to it as well. And I think that that's important to recognize.
And Chief Stevens?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, given your question, Senator, uh, was, in a common sense way, if you have ten parcels, then you gotta build a hundred houses. If you could build a hundred houses on five of those just as well as you could on ten, because it just determines on if you go up or if you want to create those living spaces around you that complement the quality of life, uh, because once you develop something, it's hard to unbuild, right? So once you destroy the, the, the land, it's harder to bring it back with a lot of work. So I, I would say that going back to Mr. Boz's thing is that if you build up, one, it can even be cheaper, you know, you build an area that has all the infrastructure there, rebuild up, uh, and then you can fit more affordable housing. But I think really the root of the problem that you and Burlington have in common that you really have to look at, when somebody's paying ten thousand dollars a student to go to UVM for housing and they get three or four people gathered and rent a place that's a lot cheaper, seven hundred dollars a month and start even two thousand a month instead of ten thousand a year, they, they start to eat up your housing because they don't want to live on campus because it's cheaper for the parents to rent a place. This is a college town and that bleeds into South Burlington. You have a lot of college students that are probably renting house, I'd love to know what the demographics are, but they think with sometimes the influx of the college getting these funds, they should look at really building new dorms and building up and then requiring people, even if it's for the first few years they live on campus or something, if they're going to be here. I think that would alleviate some of your housing crunch and it would also make it more affordable because the other students are eating up all the, all the housing because they're willing to pay. I'm not saying that's always the case, but, but, but there's two things. Build responsibly and create those green spaces that you need, um, and, and strategize on that, but also you have to look at what's eating up the housing, not saying that's all that's eating up the housing, but, but I'm just saying there's probably a lot to do with it and make it affordable for people like our citizens or others, you have to do that because, I mean, nobody can spend between childcare and housing, they can't, they can't live free, so that's, that's what's happening, so, anyway.
Question four, please hold, Pam. One, how do you encourage people to use public transportation? One, sorry, question I have is every time they drive around, they only see maybe one or two people on a bus. Now, there's some buses that may be built, but the routes behind the road, there's one that goes out to Bristol and the road, so they might have seen one or two people on the bus. Uh, along Williston Road, um, Paxton Road, no, not Paxton, sorry, Williston Road, uh, even into Burlington. Now, maybe the essence would be better, but so one question is, how do you encourage people to use the public transportation? Um, the other question I have is can you, um, have too much land, uh, preserved for the public in a community? And I'm sort of a bit of a troublemaker in the sense that so many people have, not so many, but a few people have thought, again, that we should really preserve Monden or the outlying areas and build out South Burlington. But is there not a law in that strategy? Because ultimately, Monden is going to be built everywhere and the outlying districts as well. So the transportation and the question regarding to build out.
Yeah, the pregnant pause here.
Uh, I can speak and just say that as someone who takes the bus to work, um, it was UVM taking away easy access to parking. That as long as we have easy parking, we're going to have individual, you know, vehicles. And I would say also the fact that I live close to two bus lines, it's super easy for me. Um, so since we talked about Philly Drive, I personally am in favor of more housing and densely developed housing near Philly Drive, to be able to have that bus line extend to those medical services that people need access to, that's just one person's point of view, if that keeps following. You can argue with me too.
Uh, I'll say something, I don't want to talk to a guy a lot, but we do a lot of it. But, um, one thing I have a question about preserving too much land. Um, if you're only in control of South Burlington, I would think you concentrate on what you can do within South Burlington and not so much worry about, uh, others who are in control over their, that are conditioned or those. So my, my thought is what can you do within your control to help preserve, but also provide the needs of your people? I'm not saying that's a tactic, I'm just saying that, um, you can't rely on what others do, like governments change, people change, you, you're never going to control somebody else's, so try to do what's within your own control, I would, I would think, because that's what we try to do, um, as a product, we, we, we manage our own people, I don't worry about the citizens, we're not worried about the environment. So I'm saying we work together, as if we can, but we have our own thing and they have their own. Um, as for transportation, the only thing I could say is, let me give you, I like, I like the examples. You legislate, right, you're a legislative body for, for the, for the city. When I was a kid, I'd be finding bottles all up and down the road because people would throw them out the window, be all over the hayfields, be in the ditches, be smashed on the road. It'd be, it'd be immense, you know, people drive, they're driving towards the window, I mean, that's just what people did, right? I mean, not like, it's just what a lot of people did, uh, which is wrong. But when you have ten percent of the people that always do the right thing, I don't care what they do, they're always going to be conservative, they're always going to do the right thing, they're gonna care what they want. Then you got, you know, the bad actors that don't care at all, that I don't care if you find them, thrown in jail, do, do whatever, they're, they're just not going to do the right thing. So how do you legislate responsibly to make those eighty percent do the right thing? The bottle redemption was a perfect example. So when people threw them out the window, you had these kids going up and down the, the gullies, picking them up, so they could capture candy bars or you have some old person pick them up, buy a bottle, hook or something, but they were being cleaned up, right? And then the grandparents were saving for the boy scout, or they're saving for the kids, or they're cashing themselves. That is responsible legislation, so if you want them to ride the bus, you have to look at what is, what is there that you can do to make their, that be an incentive for them to hang bus? Or do you then say, you know what, I sent my twenty thousand dollars to the bus, maybe we'll put the kids on the, on the transit, maybe they'll use that, or I don't know the answer, so just throw it big time, but how do you make it viable so people will take that bus? Because humans are in a insufficiency, if they can just hop in their car and go to work, they're going to do it. If the people who don't have cars, it's the people who are elderly that can't drive anymore, it's going to be the kids. So you have to kind of build your transportation around those or people will, will then start following that lead because the ten percent who really want to do good things is not flew the air to ride a bus. And then the other people will never ride a bus, but it's like, what is that eighty percent that you get? What is, what can you make an incentive for them to do? And I think that any policy you create, if you use that philosophy, I think that you can, it'll help guide people towards doing the right thing. Um, anyway.
I think Liz, Liz has lots to speak.
Do try and get as close to the mic as you can.
Yeah, I think the transportation issue is really interesting because I know the KVM's whole tactic has been trying to take parking as expensive as possible to make sure that people don't, uh, it's like the fact of the sustainability that you told me is that they park permits as expensive as possible for students and they do not need their cars. But rather than the problem you know, run into is accessibility for the people who do it. I have friends who worked off campus from, they're from the Vermont area and they needed their car to get to work to go freelance, to make money to pay for their education. If someone who lives out of state, who has a sick parent, a sick family member, needs to get back and forth from home, he's bringing a car and now they're stuck paying these fees for way more money for something that they need. And I'm just super interested about the solutions to our, and just, and research that GMT has done, on why they don't have more people riding the bus, um, and how that could be made more accessible. Um, things that I've heard from people are either schedules not lining up, um, work schedules or just starting that I'm trying to take them to walk to a bus street and back is just quicker to drive. So I do think the biggest thing, um, unfortunately is those, as Megan was saying, like those pricing, making it an accessible start, that's why I walk everywhere, it's, it's hard to find parking, it's expensive to find parking, so I always walk, I can avoid it. Um, but there's a flip side to that point as well, which is important to keep in mind too. Yeah, there are no easy solutions, but those are things that I've run into with transportation as well.
Yeah.
It's all, the switch on the bottom, that's the rhythm.
Uh, I, I want, I want to ask the Chiefs and the speaker to address the issue that, that, um, Tom was raising. And it comes down to what do you sacrifice? Uh, what Tom was mentioning is that in South Burlington, we have, uh, still areas that are considered rural. There are meadows, there are grasslands, there are forests, there are habitats, there are wetlands, they're appearing areas. There also happen to be utilities that could, that service those. And so what Tom is asking, I think, if I'm, if I'm joking correctly, is why waste the utility lines and put in place and put housing on the meadows, cut down the trees, pave over the wetlands? Because you already have the utilities there. But when you're talking about the background of climate change and nature is all we've got to save us, then when you pave over the weapons, cut down the trees, lock up the waterways, you're taking away the sources that can protect us from carbon sequestration, the wildlife, the insects, the birds, the bees. So do you sacrifice nature because you have infrastructure in place and it would be economically very fast, beneficial to put housing on the meadow? But they would end up paying the cost that nature would have provided you in, you know, flood mitigation, climate, um, carbon sequestration, habitat and all that, so what do you sacrifice?
Are you actually, Chief, for that?
Everyone.
I bet everyone.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, you're one.
Please sit in the mic, please. Just, it's mostly, we can hear you, but they can't.
It goes back to thinking in a two dimensional way. Why do you have to sacrifice anything? Why can't you provide the infrastructure you need while providing habitat for wildlife? Because if you take away the habitat for the, the fox, you take away the habitat for the, um, the bobcat, then guess what's not eating those rodents? And all of a sudden you have a wreck infestation because they're not, or, you know, or the owls are trying to pick up and eat the, the stuff. So my point being, you have to not give up one for the other. And I'll use a perfect example of what happened in Massachusetts. And I'm not sure, um, if you guys know about, there was a big farm that wanted to, um, they couldn't make it. They couldn't make it doing farming because farming is a tough business, right? That's why a lot of kids aren't going into it. That's a seven day job. I mean, it's not like you can just tell the house, I'm just holding on to Monday and I won't do that. So they had this vegetable farm, right? But they needed to be able to pay solar, you know, get energy. So they built it high off the ground so they could still get their garden tractors underneath it. So they could still grow crops between the rows. And they still got the sunlight from above because they built it high instead of off the ground. So they can still farm it because there was still sunlight in the fields. They just came away from where the, the, the underwoods were obviously. But they can still grow the vegetables. They still had the access to the land and grow things. But they just made the solar panels higher in the air. So I mean, that's a way of looking at, they did both. They got the energy they needed. They took some back to the grid. They got the energy and helped them pay for the farm. But they also, they also were still able to grow crops. They house by the box and that still provides a place for the animals to be able to eat those mice that are after the, the, the stuff. I mean, you need parks, you need open space just for people's sanity. I mean, if you ever lived in the city, which I'll never live again, it's hard to live with no green space. It is really depressing. And then the animals and stuff. So create habitat. But look at ways to, that's why I keep saying, don't think of humans first. Think three dimension. How do we build this responsibly for humans, but also protect the trees and the animals and the environment? If you can figure that out with every question that you ask, there's probably a solution there that's going to at least get you most of the way to doing the right thing. So I just want to use that as an example, um, of how you could build responsibly or how you could do certain things. We do it all the time. When people are close to the ocean, they build high so that way the wind will wash out their house. There, there are many ways that you can plan, that you could, that you could do these kind of things. You just have to think outside the box and think in a three dimensional way.
Anybody else?
I think that, I mean, I, I'll say something about balance because I do think that it's a fundamental challenge you have where, you know, take the, the question of housing, right? We've had these like regional housing summits. Everybody knows that housing accessibility is really limited in our area. So what do you do about it? How do you actually make housing accessible and affordable? Um, a couple of the speakers talked about the crunch that you get from it being a college town. Absolutely true. But who is going to build new housing and who is, who are they going to build it for? What is the market for building accessible, affordable housing? There really isn't one, right? What, what developer is going to go in and say, I'm going to build, you know, out of the goodness of my heart, I'm going to build, um, you know, housing that's going to go at more, you know, just at, you know, market rate or below market rate. So if you don't have the, the federal government stepping in to build public housing and you don't have a lot of resources to do that, how do you actually create affordable housing? People talk about all the different services that they want, but how do you actually make it happen? I saw one of the other questions in here about how do we encourage public transportation? Uh, I think that's, you know, there's a part of it that, that says, how do you encourage it? But there's also other ways that you have to think about, well, how do you, how do you have people think about these kinds of things as public goods? Because I think that is a real challenge in our communities in the US in general. The way in which development has happened, we don't tend to think of natural spaces as a public good. We don't tend to think about transportation as a public good. When I sat on the GMT, we had regularly, we had people from other parts of the state say, well, why should we pay for a transportation hub in Burlington? And I'm thinking, well, because it's part of a broader network. But that's not always the way in which we think about it. We say that, well, you know, why, why isn't this bus coming to me? You know, the bus is really inconvenient. It doesn't come to me all the time. But if we think about, you know, the bus is not your car. The bus is not a private vehicle. So I think part of this is kind of like trying to address, you know, what so many of the other speakers have said is like, what is the balance? And how is it that you're actually going to achieve it? What is it that you're willing to sacrifice? You know, everybody is willing to say, yes, we have to protect the environment. Yes, we have to, uh, make sure that the, uh, the economy doesn't suffer. But the reality is like, not all of those things can be squared. You, we have to make certain kinds of choices and, and they will result in pain in some other kind of way. Would people be willing to, you know, undertake some of the kinds of policy positions that we see floated if it meant that they would themselves personally pay a price? Because I think that's one of the biggest questions in an advanced industrial society in the US that we don't, you know, the first time we had a, one of these big earth summits in Rio, the first thing that George Bush the first said was the lifestyle of the US is not on the table. If that's true, why, what are we even talking about, right? So I think that's one of the questions that when a city is sitting there saying, what do we balance? What do we sacrifice? It's not just what we can get, but what are we willing to give up? And I think that's the big, big challenge.
Hold the chair that I really need to leave it. My apologies for talking out a little bit. But thank you. This has been a great step.
Thanks. Uh, I have a question from, um, who was not able to come tonight. And I told her, name is Monica Offly, and I told her I would ask, um, now, these are far from the questions for our two chiefs here. Um, so there are several and I could probably ask them all at once if they all are in one category. Do any of you know if any land in South Burlington was confiscated from the FNAK people using the moral act? And are any guests aware of any form of apology or corrective measure for any lands UVM now owns, quote unquote, as a result of the moral act? And specifically has UVM made any corrective measure regarding the land of the Dakota people? Which were, they were granted, those lands were granted to UVM as a result of the moral act? And then she followed up that question with if those lands, uh, were sold by UVM and the Dakota lands were sold, how much, and then? So very specific historical questions. I know you both have said that there are no deeds to the land that your people lost.
I don't, I don't know if they definitely know, but I can tell you, working with UVM, uh, like on the apology for the eugenics program, I work with UVM quite a bit. Uh, they are, I think, great college. I don't know what lands they require based on that, um, moral, uh, law or whatever you mentioned. I know I've never dug into the same, most of the land, I think, other than what they sit on was given from outside of our territory. Uh, I think people should respect the land that was taken from the original peoples. I mean, all land was taken, I mean, from us. I mean, we shared our land. We shared with the French who came down, fight with us. We shared, Europeans shared with the British. Just the Europeans decided to take it when we were using it as being stewards. And we charge our territory as we, you know, kind of do our thing within that and try to manage the resources. But where we run into with the European way of thinking, right or wrong, I think it's wrong way of looking at the world. But they say, they get a piece of land, they say, this is mine, all the resources are mine. Then when they use it all up, they say, I'm going to try to take yours and then, and then use up your resources instead of. How are you leaving that resource to be shared or used, uh, probably whether it be public good, whether it be, um, whether it be for the animals, trees and also the humans, uh, because we're all related. And so I don't know specifically about UVM. I can tell you that we do not have access to any lands that UVM owns. We have access to Milbury lands. We have access to Sherona College's lands because I know I have negotiated those. We have access to other lands, but we don't have access to UVM. Um, and that's, 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 we can't force their hand, that's up to the administration to say, how do we work with the EVM? I know that they work, this is one of the summer happenings. This stuff with Jeff and things like that. We've, we've done some things with them too. But we work mostly with the, not the administration, but the departments like extension service or the, or the interfaith or, you know. So it's really the compartment wise, the college, you know, because they each run on their own thing. So I don't know if that answered the question, but I don't know specifically what lands they have or what they got land and ranch from. All I know is that if they land, that they, that they, if their college resides on nothing, on what you mean is our homeland, then we should go back to our home. That's, that could be just reset. And whether we'll get that, we don't know. But at least that's what I've been working with the land access. Even if we can't get it, we didn't want to keep ownership, we should at least be able to use it to benefit our people. Um, whether that be through an easement, whether it be through a license, a permit, I mean, we'd prefer that to that. Um, but, you know, if not, at least allow us to access it like our ancestors. I mean, I don't think there's much.
Yeah, one quick question. Um, can, can you explain more clearly to me what you really mean about, um, having access to South Burlington lands in terms of the, the nuts and the medicinal, um, plants and that? I mean, if we were to sit down with you and say, well, let's talk about this. Is it our public land or is it, I mean, we have a ton of nut trees on our property. Does it, would that be, you would be, you know, coming in and collecting the nuts? Um, so can you explain that a little more, please?
Well, and like I said, if you went to our website, evmntrib.org and looked at the partnerships, there's probably 20 or 30, um, access to land that we, that we have. We have some land that's like BLT lands. We have, we have, we can do whatever we want almost on there as long as we're able to strike them in. Cause they know that we're original stewards. We're not going to destroy it. Um, when I say access to public lands, there are already access to public lands for most of the people in South Burlington because they're public. However, I bet you don't allow them to go and date out some little head firms or you, I bet you don't allow them to take some of our, our, our tree there. I'm just saying there's probably rules around those kind of ordinances where you can't do things because it's for public, right? So we have special, because this was our home and, and our ancestors did that and we still practice our traditional way of life. That whenever the town is comfortable or the city is comfortable with duty, whether it be allowing us to only gather so much, or if you look at those permits and licenses, you get an idea. But if we can gather those nuts and, and stuff from whether it be that it's easy, you have to make the rules for the city. You can pass the, you can pass something through your lawyer and say, yeah, we'll go, have an access to our land to gather medicine, foods, uh, natural nuts, berries and medicine, whatever. Now, individuals, you're not going to be able to force your will on yours citizens, right? So anyway, what we do is we say, we are doing this to show partnership with the native people who originally live here. We encourage people who want to also follow suit to then do that or create a list of things within the town that could be published for our people to have access. You know, that and, and work through whatever, um, you know, work in partnership. And it's not just for us. It could be, there's a lot of people in the Zampa quarter that usually gather, probably gather and do things, but they don't know where to go and they don't want to get arrested for being on your land. So I think like working with us in partnership, I, I think, um, that's, that should be an easy thing, right? You have a town, I don't know if you have a town or a village, probably don't, but, but if you have lands that can be used. I mean, give me a muskrat room grows in marginal areas, right? We can use it for throw closets. Black hatch grows in wet areas, right? You have margins you just talked about. There's probably medicines and things that we could use in those areas that if they're native people living in Burlington, they can just go and do it, you know? And whatever those rules are around it. And then work with us in the conservation piece. They work with us to say, what should we put here? How do we work together to help? Provide not only agro forestry for, for native people, but also us, but also the, the animals around, right? I mean, or those water coffers you're trying to catch pollution on. You know, and I'm just saying, there's a lot of those spaces that you could, you could go down. But we can't do it for free all the time. We get asked all the time to be on panels, do things for free. You, you have to expect that, you have to pay for those people, those expertise to help, um, with your programs, right? It's just because, you know, you're giving up your time, but you also have to respect the fact that it's their time. So I just want to put that there because we always get asked to be on a lot of things for free all the time and it's hard.
Like tonight.
Yeah, like tonight, but we're, but this is a poor, no, what I'm saying is we, we can pick and choose, but it's better that we pick and choose than somebody assumes, right? I mean, so anyway.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
The only thing I want to talk about, you mentioned deeds. I have seen deeds, in fact, we've got a deed in our state, um, that's, I forgot how many acres it was. It was a thousand acres that was leased out to, um,
Mike, right to you?
Yeah, it was leased out to, I, I don't know if it was Bayland or France, you know, it's been a while, a couple of years since I've seen it. And, um, it was a hundred year lease and they were supposed to pay some money per year of lease. Such a lot of leases that as people change, people die off, the lease went on the waste. We still have the lease to this day as original lease. Um, and I know a lot of land right now, it's started, it's started to lighten as part of the wildlife down there. So if I draw the relevant, it's on the wildlife reservation.
Can I ask a follow up before we go to the, I'm like, what I learned from Rich Hulshu, who is a member of, is it the El New? Yeah, El New, I'm not going to. Um, he said that because you were, uh, involved in the Revolutionary War and the colonies were not yet in Vermont, but yet there was, uh, already a taking of land. Maybe, you know, to the French or the English, you know, governors that were, that were governing that land, that you are not eligible for the, the rights that, you know, native peoples out in the Midwest and the West have. Because that was after, uh, the United States became the United States. Um, and so it is hard, according to what I understood from him saying, for you to get a legal standing in order to reclaim what was yours. Like we see other native peoples being able to do.
That's how, that's how the passage of body got their land back is from the 19th Confederacy, which, which predated, uh, that back in the French and British times. That's how they got their land in the reservation act is they, because those treaties were signed by the 19th Confederacy. And it has nothing to do with Americans and all that stuff. If you think of things, why I work on easements, right? Uh, and other things, guess what follows the deed? Everything on that land purchased, the way Europeans have to set up is everything follows the deed. So if I put an easement on today, 20 years down the road or a hundred years down the road, that easement still going to be a place, right? So, so those, those, those deeds that were made with the British or the, or the French or whatever, those are legal, those are legal things. It's just nobody's enforced it, right? Nobody has enforced those things. And, and good luck because you have. And, and good luck, because you have the weight of the European government fighting you to not lose control of that. If we went for a land issue, why do you think that our recognition, but does not give you any rights to land? Like, do they do that with any other culture? No, right? I'm still waiting on my two shillings a year, and fifty bags of corn. And that's for the Philps lease up in the Northeast Cape that they own for Philps Grant, which were tied to seventeen ninety-six, right? I'd say that'd be most of the core, well, yeah. I'm just kidding. But, but I, I'm saying is that deeds are supposed to, or things are supposed to follow the deed, right? And, and we've already proven that those are facts. That's why we have hiring of fishing rights. I was working with the Attorney General, and that's why we had a press conference by saying, we never gave up our rights to hunting and fishing, just like we never gave up our rights to our land. We didn't look at, why we got owes? Because native people don't look at ownership in the same way Europeans. We look at stewardship. We used to sit around and talk to each other and say, we don't want to use up all the resources. If you go on the Clyde River, I'll go on the Lee. And so we can not use up all the deer in the place and the move. That's the rhetoric. We move places, places, we use up the resources. As we move, Europeans came and said, oh, this looks pretty rural, but nobody's here. Yeah, guess what? Then we went back and they're, they're gone, right? So all of that land was taken, and that's where there's a big struggle. Because, you know, Europeans have a different mindset. And all we're saying is, we have to live now with the European dominant culture. We have no choice. So if it's getting deeds to be able to not get paid off from it, that's what we should get back. If it's just, have these easements or access to it, so we don't have to use it, well, guess what? That's another form of access. So I don't, I think there's, there's claims out there, but try kidding it because it's gonna tie up in core. I mean, look at the line you wrote. She's, you know, people freak out, I'm gonna think they're gonna lose their land, when it used to be our. So, anyway.
Thank you.
But we're, we're both gonna live here, so we have to partner, right?
I agree.
We're, Europeans are here, they're not going anywhere, and they, they are native people. So we have a voluntary partner.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, there is a question. Leslie Plume, thank you, for Dr. Dupine Gishu. Can you hear me, Dr. Dupine Gishu? Yes, and I think you can read the question too. Fifty percent of the land in South Burlington is not available for housing. Some of this land is wetlands and parks, but the remainder is privately owned land that might be ideal for future neighborhoods if they were not required to be conserved. Does this conservation hurt the environment more than it helps by pushing development further out? And again, just a clarification, the fifty percent is, is not conserved, right? It's, it's just a question, should we conserve it or, or, or what's the correct balance there?
And I actually responded in the chat, so if you're scrolling up, you'll probably see it. But anybody who might be on the phone, I'll read out my answer. I said, thanks for the question. Part of Act Two Fifty was designed to protect existing wetlands. I think these parts, these types of conversations are particularly timely because the state is actively drafting strategies on how to use existing land, land used to perform base solutions to mitigate against and adapt to climate change. Nature Conservancy has done a lot of work in this area of working with private and public partners on how best to conserve the environment for the common good.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's one more.
So there was one more question in the chat from Sandy Dooley. Have the Abenak'i nations in Vermont applied for recognition as a nation by the federal government? If yes, what happened in response to that application?
Well, I do know that we have applied for recognition. I was back some days ago before my time. It was, I think they answered all of these, except two. They couldn't, the two parts that they could not answer. And so they came back. The other thing, I think they spent a couple hundred thousand dollars just trying to get this process through. And limited income, I'd say, we relied everything on grants and donations. In fact, we just talked about this here a couple months ago. They'd like to do it, but it takes money. And why do we don't have it? So it's a question on the table.
Yeah, just to kind of elaborate a little bit, when Sisquay went for recognition, the state did not want indigenous people who like recognized. William Sorrell, who was the Attorney General at the time, spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go against the Sisquay tribe to thwart their petition for federal recognition. I think that was around two thousand six, I was, I was something, four at that time, for Sisquay. So they, they really put the knuckles, the state of Vermont, to the native people, which scared a lot of the native people. Our approach was a little different. Our approach was, what, what do we need that federal tribe to have? We need access to grants. We don't have access to grants. We don't have access to all grants, because some are just for federal tribes. But we have Title VII, we did for Title VI, I needed education. We have USB eight grants, we have community service block grants. Okay, so we don't need that. Well, it would be nice to carry our eagle feathers and be able to pray that we use. I took on the federal interior official outline and obtained the legal agreements to carry our eagle feathers. So that was, now we can practice our truth wildly with the same thing that federal tribes have. We, 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 we take care of our own people. We are recognized, just like they are. It's a European process, we just went through a different one. But if you were going for federal recognition, you need a few things. You need a lot of money, millions. You need twenty years, because I think Sisquay filed in the seventies and they didn't even get denied till two thousand six or something. It was something like this at the time. It was, it, it takes you forever, and most of the people that were there that applied are not there anymore because they died off or whatever. So, and you need the state backing you to give your federal delegation the law before you because they want revenue for building, whatever, some kind of revenue source to bring that revenue to the state. The state of Vermont did not want that revenue. They don't want casinos, we're surrounded by it. They, they put that in the bill too. Even the treasurer, who wanted to build this casino on Lake Champlain on the Spirit of Ethan Island to get revenue on the, that international water thing, they said no. They don't want any of that gambling. So we don't have the support needed, we don't have the money, and we don't have the longevity. So our option was, if we can get the things we need to survive through state recognition, then we may not have all the benefits of the federal recognition, but we have enough to, to, to do what we need to do for our people. And we still went through a legitimized process to prove who we are. Which is another thing that's just crazy, because we don't, we shouldn't have to prove who we are. I mean, I'd like to see everybody here pull out their native, their card and prove that's who they are. We have to do that. Where the only race of people that can't just sell their player, because if we do, we're fake, we're fraud, we're all this kind of crap. But, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a, a form of oppression and, and, you know, systemic racism in that we have to prove our lineage where no other people have to. And that, and that shouldn't, under the UN Declaration of Endangered Rights, that they say we should not. But anyway, we're not in those worlds, because we talked already about that. But my point being is that I have no interest, I don't think any tribe really has an interest in going for federal recognition because it wouldn't be supported. I don't think we would give it up if somebody gave it to us, because somebody would help give us more resources. But I don't, but I don't think any of us are actively seeking it. And if we were, the state of Vermont would jump on that in like two point five seconds. Because it puts us on the same level as them with the federal government, where now we're underneath.
I do want to respect our panel's time. We have six minutes over. Is it all right if we have one last question? All right, you see that Dr. Rose is left, right? Yeah, okay. All right, one other question. Yes, and this is directed just to the chiefs. Given what you just said about the federal government and state of Vermont, let's, let's talk about South Burlington. Is there anything that the city of South Burlington can do to right the injustice that has been done to you and your people? The city can do some things, maybe, but what could South Burlington do?
If you're asking deeds, you can't paint pictures.
Well, no.
No, 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 I'm saying, so that, so my thing is, even though things might happen that are done wrong, I don't, we don't need people out saying, oh, you did this to me, so you owe me. We don't need, we're saying, look, this happened, we don't like it. How do we fix it so it gets better and doesn't happen again? And that's the partnership. Like, you could give us access to our traditional home lands through your processes to allow us to access. You could provide those areas for our people to go and worship the way they want, that create space where they could, they could go and do their ceremonies. That's close by, they don't have to travel that long sometimes. You could, you could start doing that. If you're gonna do a land acknowledgement, don't do it if you're not gonna give us access to the land. I see so many people saying, we're on the Indian Territory, Abenak'i people, oh, but by the way, we're not gonna give you access to it. You know, I mean, it's hypocritical, right? It's this and that. So if you're gonna do a land acknowledgement, then give us access to the land that you hold. So I'm saying, if you could work with us to partner and find ways to help uplift our people. Because we are indigenous people. If there's ways to help Abenak'i citizens in South Burlington uplift them somehow, whether it be through food programs, whether it be through any kind of municipality programs that you could provide to them, that is how you start to change the dialogue, to give, to make us on a level playing field. Because we don't have the generational wealth that they do. So how do you work with us and our kids not to be afraid of who they are? You know, how do you build education in your school systems to teach about us so that way people aren't afraid of us? They don't do that. I'm saying, there's a lot of things that South Burlington could do to partner with us to help educate about Abenak'i people, Abenak'i ways, Abenak'i access to things. And then guess what? If you can do that as well, you can work, do that with any community. You can do it with a resettled program, provide places for us to display our, our art, provide places our artists can sell gifts. I mean, there's so many things, right? We, you know, but it takes the conversations with the community, with us, with, with other people that, you know, cultural center, Ethan Allen Home Center, Vermont Indigenous Heritage Center is, is at Ethan Allen Home Center, federal wise, and they're alumni, they teach culture. So, you know, I'm saying, why couldn't we do something that, you know, here? Anyway, I don't know if you want to speak to the chief.
Well, you have my email, I have yours. We can certainly follow up to see what ways those relationships can be established and raised that are ethical. I think that's coming back to the theme of tonight and introducing equity, that, that land use, which is also waterways and wetlands. But we also talked about fruit trees and access to land with spiritual worship. I don't know if there's a newer term for you. But we can certainly develop those relationships. And I think that's also important to any communities that we have in our support. I just want to thank you again. I thank you, Dr. Dupine Gishu, for hanging in there with the sounds. This is our first time in this, in this meeting room, and we thank you for your patience as well as for sharing your expertise. Hi, my colleagues, I do hope to see you in the coming weeks when you're gonna be speaking to the UVM community as well. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you to my colleagues and of course to our team members. So I wish you all a good house for your week, and we will continue this discussion.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Thursday, yeah, six.
I'm really glad.
Do you know where the BCA meeting is?
I can tell you.
I don't.
The BCA meeting in room three oh one.
No, no, we get, it takes time.
So if we came back, so the women, the chickens, the women that's got worms, the chickens on Mount of South Burlington, but would that be a taking? Or would Tom forget that they're giving? See you Thursday.